It's 5:30. I'm going to call the meeting to order. And with that, could we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. And we'd like to add an executive session following the adoption of the agenda and before appointments. And I'd also like to remove Item C from the consent agenda and move it to items for commission action. Commissioners, have you had a chance to review the agenda? And do you have any modifications or additions to the agenda?
I do not.
Commissioner Hayes?
This is Commissioner Hayes speaking. I do not.
Okay. If there are no modifications further than the two I made, then I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we adopt the agenda with moving C to the items for commission action.
I'll second the motion. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Commissioner Hayes says aye.
Next item on the agenda is an executive session. So I move that we recess for an executive session for consultation with the city's attorney regarding possible litigation pursuant to the Attorney-client Privilege Exception, KSA 75-4319B2. And the meeting will resume at 5:47.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Commissioner Hayes says aye.
Motion carried. We'll have the city attorney, city manager, commissioners, David, Assistant City Manager.
And Terry.
And Terry Liebarger. Going to need to extend executive session for another 15 minutes. So I'll make a motion that we extend for 15 minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, we're back in session. There's no action taken from executive session. Is Dean back on the line?
Did you unmute that one?
Commissioner Hayes, are you online?
I am. Thank you.
Okay. And we'll continue. Item two, appointments. Economic Development Advisory Board, we have one resignation. An expired term ends January 1, 2022. Applications were due by 5:00 PM on November 5, 2020. With that, I would like to appoint Brian Height to the Economic Development Advisory Board. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Hayes says aye.
Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda. We've removed Item C to the items for commission action.
That was Item E.
Oh, excuse me. Item E? Okay, I'm sorry. I heard it as C. Item E for commission action.
I'll second the motion. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Hayes says aye.
Motion carried. Item four is items for commission action. We'll back up to Item E. Consider authorizing an agreement with Heartland AV for the not-to-exceed amount of $7,000, $75,000 from Spark grant funds for the Memorial Hall AV equipment.
Mayor, this is Sparks Funding, and we went out for bids for AV equipment and recording cameras and the ability to do social media. We received one bid. The primary reason we only received one bid is there are so many Spark grants out. All of them are tied up or stated that they would not be able to meet the deadline. So we do have one company that is willing to meet it. We asked for $75,000 working with Lacy. We were able to come up with that amount of money, and our recommendation was to delete two cameras off the original setup that was proposed to stay at that budget of $75,000. Those cameras would have been in the veterans' room, the cameras at the front of the room that showed the podium and the audience, or in the civic center, the camera against the gallery wall that would have showed the audience or the podium. An example would be like in the First Friday setting. The cameras would still be present in the commission setup to show both podium and the commission. And all of the wiring to interconnect everything is all included in that $75,000.
Okay. I wondered, since we were so close to getting the whole system, if at this time we'd like to consider doing a complete system and providing the difference of $11,000 from our own funding. Thought bring that up for the commissioners to discuss and see. Because the way I took it, that this was going to have all the wiring and everything there to add the cameras at a later date.
Yes, sir.
And my thought was to do it all at once. Then we have a turnkey, complete system. It's all debugged and ready to go when they walk out the door, where if we come back later, there's a chance of modifications needed or incompatibility or additional adjustments. That this way it'd bring the system complete and just for an additional $11,000.
That makes sense to me. Basically, the $11,000 is the cost of the two additional cameras. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense to me. I would be agreeable to go ahead and move forward in that direction. We'll have a turnkey completion, like you've indicated. And yeah, I'd be good with that.
Commissioner Hayes, what are your thoughts?
I have just this one question, and that is, is it rational to assume that $5,500 per camera is the going rate for that installation? Or whether this is perhaps just a demand cycle that has, you know, it's got things inflated and that a year from now, those cameras would be less expensive?
This is Lacy. I don't know if that answer is necessarily known. But I would like to point out that this project was originally budgeted at $51,000, and we've already increased the scope and the budgeting, moved things around to accommodate the additional funding. And it's not solely from Spark. It's also already from our budget. The reason I had asked David to pare it down and remove the two cameras was to fit within that budget of $75,000. Just because I'm really not convinced that we need those two additional cameras. The system is still turnkey. We wouldn't have to have it wired that way. It's really just cameras pointing at the audience. Sure, it would increase flexibility, but functionality-wise, we are getting everything that we need for the $75,000, which again is already $20,000 over budget.
I understood the $75,000 was all from Spark money.
No, it is not.
That was my understanding. That's my apology.
Oh, no. No, because it's...
I thought we had rearranged money, Lacy.
Yeah, because it says Spark Funding for this project is $75,000.
Lacy, I thought you took some funds out of something else, another Spark, and moved it over to this project.
I did to get to $65,000. Originally, we had $45,000 in Spark funding allocated to this. And I've written a letter to the state requesting reallocation of an additional $20,000 and then made up the remaining $10,000 difference through our budget. But this would then be adding another $11,000, making it $22,000 out of, or $21,000 out of our budget.
Okay, so originally, I'm trying to take notes. $45,000 was from Sparks for this audiovisual equipment. Then you reallocated how much from Spark?
$20,000.
$20,000. Okay. And $10,000 was from our budget?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that changes. I thought that we had the grant for the full $75,000, and it seemed logical to me at that time to come up with the additional funds to complete the installation. But if you're already taking $10,000 from the budget to get it to $75,000... Yeah, I think I'll second. Have second thoughts on putting another $11,000 out of our budget. I don't know. Commissioners?
I thought the $75,000 was Spark money myself also. So knowing that and her explanation that it is a turnkey and those cameras can be added later, that's not going to really affect anything. We've already taken $10,000 from the budget, and we've moved $20,000 from another Spark fund to make up $65,000 for this. So knowing that, I'm going to go with the agreement that we just eliminate the two cameras at this point and not have to come up with another $11,000 out of the budget.
Commissioner Hayes?
I would support the motion as written.
Okay. I think this is what I like about removing items from the consent agenda. It just gives us time to discuss out these issues and get better understanding. Because I know there's a lot going on, and I'm glad we had the conversation this afternoon, too.
My understanding, we moved it all from Spark.
Yeah. Yeah, this is good. I'm glad. Thank you, Lacy, for being online and being able to give us that input. So commissioners, any further questions on this before I call for a motion?
I'm good.
Commissioner Hayes, I'm good.
Okay, with that, I'll call for a motion then.
I make a motion. I move to authorize the agreement with Heartland AV for the amount not to exceed $75,000 of Spark funding.
And I'll second the motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Commissioner Hayes says aye.
Motion carried. Okay, now, items for commission action. Item A, consider authorizing an agreement with PEC for advanced metering infrastructure and water line replacement.
We have some engineers from PEC online as well.
Okay, will you identify yourself, please?
Yeah, for the water line and water metering project, this is Ryan Glessner with PEC. I'm with our Muni Division that kind of specializes in water and sewer design.
Okay. Terry, would you like to fill us in on the proposal?
Yes, we sent this out. This is for the water line project that I'd put together in the area from Sycamore Street to Oak and from 10th to 13th, doing line replacements where we've had a tremendous amount of leaks. And also the AMI metering system that we are wanting to install to get us up to speed on our metering and data collection from the meter reading.
The automated meter reading system, will that include remote reading? I know there's a lot of different systems, a drive-by, remote.
What we're looking at is the fully automated remote reading where the reads would go to City Hall, and there wouldn't be a need for somebody to drive around or manually read meters. It's the most efficient system out there. It's a infrastructure-in-place system that basically you'd say hardwired. I mean, it's not really hardwired, but it's in place. Collection would be through towers in different locations. We'd pick up all the reads and send them to City Hall.
Terry, the towers would be basically the collectors, and then they'd communicate to the main...
Yes.
...main frame at City Hall and then dump all that information in? Okay. And if it's set up that if one of those towers doesn't communicate, those meters will find the next nearest tower to communicate if there's an issue with one? They'll search another one to be able to communicate to where you'll be able to still get information if there is a tower down. Is that correct?
Yeah, we haven't gone that far into the system, but that's normally the case, where they will seek out a tower and they will communicate. There's all kinds of different systems out there, so.
Okay, will this also allow you to... Are you looking at turn-on and turn-off water at this point? Or that's still being looked at?
It's going to be looked at. I don't know if it's...
Feasible? Or the cost-wise makes it feasible?
Really cost-effective to do every meter with that? I mean, you have some meters that never get turned off.
Right.
And to spend a couple hundred dollars per meter to have that capability makes no sense. We could go through some of our frequent flyers and put them on there and educate them as to what we can do, and it'd probably stop a lot of it.
Okay. And on that, you had indicated 4,400 AMI meters being activated? So that would be the, that would include all the residential accounts?
Yes.
And then...
All residential, commercial, everything.
And commercial everything, 4,400? Okay.
Yeah, it's approximately 4,400.
A complete system, then? You'd have, the whole system would be automated?
Yes.
Okay. And the...
And there's some other things you can do in that, too. Once you go to that type of system, we could place some meters in different locations in town on main lines and serve as leak indicators where if there was something happening, like the airport line where we get leaks once in a while, if we were to put a meter on it, all of a sudden we see a big spike, things like that. You can, there's all different kinds of options and expandability to it for control of the system.
Do these systems, maybe this is engineering question, Ryan? Do they notify the person having the meter at their house if usage immediately goes up? Or the Evergi electric meters, every week you get a printout or an email that shows your usage? Do these do that also?
So that would be a capability that we can review. Ultimately, the city would have control over what information is provided to the homeowner. The, as far as high usage and knowing if there's a leak on the homeowner's side of things, the system typically would trigger a notification or a, you know, some kind of a warning or something to the city to where at least the city would be aware of, hey, this person's using an unordained amount of water in a very short period of time to try to get ahead of leaks, rather than just, you know, realizing it at the end of every month when you're out there making a meter reading.
Okay. I know that's been kind of an issue with the current metering system that a lot of people have had leaks in the yard and not been aware of it until they get a $1,000 water bill. It sounds like it would be a big improvement for the consumer and also the city. Now, the projected cost for the system was $750,000 to 1.2 million, depending on the bells and whistles and everything for that. And what, 700,000 to 900,000 for the water lines? Funding was from the revolving grant program and...
There's also some funds budgeted. Lacy can go over that.
I have a question for Ryan. Ryan, on that AMI system, that includes all the software, the updates, the top of meter, everything that we're looking at, how we want it programmed, is that correct? And the collectors? And then that information going to the City Hall? That's the entire package?
Yeah, yeah, for that rough estimate there. And I know, you know, the first thing you guys probably see there is, you know, there's a half a million dollar difference there. But if you just look at the sheer number of meters, 4,400 meters, and depending on the final type of gen with, if there's a hundred dollars difference in just the type of meter that's selected, you know, that's 440,000 dollars there. So, yeah, that range is kind of a broad range. But yes, the intent would be to include all of the necessary meters that need to be replaced and all of the necessary software and other infrastructure that would need to be installed to make the system work.
Okay. And we would be able to program them to check as often as we wanted to? Built into that capability?
Yeah, yeah. So again, it kind of depends on the final software and everything that's chosen. But the city should have basically real-time access to all of the data, you know, on the computer system. So, I mean, it should be readily available whenever somebody wants to look at it.
All right. Thank you, Ryan.
And your services would be from preliminary design recommendations, assist with the loan application, design bidding and construction? That's what we're considering in your proposal? And your fee was $93,150 for both metering and water line? Are you looking at two projects? So the metering is separate from the water line replacement?
To some degree, yes. We'll have to combine the two when we're working through the KDHE loan application and the PER report just to cover both of those items and get them all lumped together in that KDHE loan application. And then the other fees that we have broken out, like the survey and design, that's pretty much strictly related with the water line replacement portion of the project. And the construction administration is also mostly related to the actual construction of the water line. And then the AMI strategy and commissioning, that's really focused on more of the metering system and kind of getting that all implemented, implemented, sorry. And that one, you know, there's not a whole lot of effort on our end, but we will, you know, we will work with the city, nail down what specifically they want to see in the meters, in the software, if there's specific makes and models that they're interested in, and then evaluate the system and give some guidance and some recommendations on, you know, on how the system should be commissioned and, you know, give some sequencing of, you know, what may work best along with the construction that's going on in the system to help getting meters swapped out and actually getting the software up and running. We'll have to figure out, you know, existing meter reading timelines and when those bills go out to make sure that we're not, you know, somehow messing up your guys' current mode of operation. So, I mean, there is a lot of coordination that goes in there, but the majority of the AMI stuff is just figuring out timing and sequencing of how to get all that stuff in place without negatively affecting the current system.
So in the AMI, is the operational system manufactured, installed, they come in and set the towers and set up the equipment at the reading point? And then city staff change out the meters? Or do they change the meters out on the initial set?
So normally on the projects that we've done in the past, the city staff will work on getting the meters and everything replaced just so they're the ones, you know, physically, you know, messing with the system. Just that, you know, they're the ones familiar with the existing meters and setters and everything. So normally, they do all the meters and stuff. And then depending on the type of equipment that'll go on the towers and how we want to do that, then, yeah. We, you know, sometimes there's a third party involved to help get that installed. Sometimes the cities will do that themselves, and the third party will just, will just help get it all integrated into the software. Again, that's some stuff that just during the design and during the discussions with city staff, we'll figure out, you know, who needs to do what and who will play what roles in the project.
But you'll assist the city, and at the end of the automated meter installation, you'll review and give final approval to pay for it? It's not just you're going to help us select the equipment and then turn it over, and we've got to work with all the bugs with the contractor? But you'll be there for the final acceptance and do a punch list and review of it, correct?
Yes, yep. We'll be there to make sure that everything, you know, goes smoothly and you guys end up with the end product that you're anticipating.
Okay. Commissioner Hayes, do you have any questions for Ryan?
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner, you see any further questions?
No, I just have one other question. On that AMI system, what is going to actually involve is that water meter will actually have that modular or...
involve is that water meter will actually have that modular or whatever you want to call it, the, the reading part, that'll be already be incorporated in that water meter. So, when we change out an old water meter, we'll be setting a new water meter with that device attached to it. Is that correct?
Yes. And they, they also have antennas that you have to install in the lid.
With a backup battery?
Well, the batteries...
Or batteries in it?
Yes, batteries are in them. The batteries lasting more from 10 to 20 years, so.
Okay. All right. That was my, my last question.
Okay. Terry, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
I can't think of anything.
Okay. If there's no further questions, then I'll call for a motion.
I make a motion to move to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with PEC for advanced metering infrastructure and water line replacement.
Okay. And I'll second the motion. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Hayes says aye.
Okay. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan.
Yeah, thank you.
Item B, consider authorizing a supplemental agreement with PEC for a water supply and treatment master plan. Ryan, are you still there for this? Or do we have another engineer with PEC?
Hi. Oh, sorry.
Go for it.
This is Nicole Franken with PEC. I'll be covering the water treatment side of things. I work with Sarah and her, and her team, the water wastewater team at PEC.
Okay. Terry, do you want to fill us in on the supplemental agreement, the work that we're being considered here?
Well, you know, we heard PEC and they did the phase one electrical part. And we were putting together phase two and looking at things that need to be done and, and seeing some major issues that we really didn't want to put a $4 million Band-Aid on and, and not get any life out of. So, we went back and, and they put together a scope for a master plan to look at the entire water treatment plant and the water distribution system as far as usage, future use, these water needs. And that's what we're here to discuss tonight is where we need to go with our water supply and, and our water plant.
With the water supply, does this include looking at our distribution? Or is this just at the water treatment plant?
In their proposal, they said they would look at all the major components of the water treatment plant and also look at, at future supply needs. And it's not a, an overall water system evaluation. It's just basically plant and supply.
Okay. Just at the water treatment plant itself?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Commissioner Hayes, do you have any questions?
I have none.
Commissioner Yussisi?
I'm good.
I have a question for Terry and Nicole. I know some of the, the cities now are looking at automated water treatment plants, which cuts down the need for 24-hour staffing. Is that something that could be considered in the master plan to look at what the cost and equipment necessary to automate our water treatment plant?
I can kind of cover that. So, yeah, we could, I think Sarah had passed along some information on what it might add to the cost of our contract for this data. We'd have to touch base with our electrical engineers to verify, but that's something that we're very familiar with and we can cover. I think we included controls, looking at the controls of the different components in the plant at this point, but we didn't factor in you guys wanting to actually bring it into a centralized data where everything was controlled based on logic that was burned into that system. So, to install that equipment, we probably need to get our electrical engineer to put together those costs. So, I would add a little bit more, but that's definitely doable.
Yeah. My, my question about it, I thought, you know, if, if we're going to look at a, a new upgrade, then the full automated would be something that might help with operation of the system, manpower, not trying to eliminate jobs, but provide more efficient utilization of manpower and, and continuity of operation, too.
You know, with controls, you know, if you have a system that basically runs for the most part on autopilot, you still have to have a certified operator and you still have to have operators that are able to operate everything manually in case things go down or in case the programming's off and they have to work through that. So, I think that's kind of a misconception that some people have is that you're not going to ever get rid of people at the plant. You're going to for sure have to have people that know how to operate things manually in case, you know, there's power outages and there's, or something wrong with the system that you don't foresee.
Terry, what do you think about looking at?
Well, I was just going to say the same thing. She said in the water side of it, you really can't eliminate the operators. There needs to be somebody there 24/7 to monitor the system and see that things work right. If, just because of how critical the water is and, I'm, I'm not going to throw up a bunch of bad examples, but there are some of, some automated plants that it, they've tried and it doesn't, you see them getting a lot of, or having to do a lot of boil orders.
Yeah. I think the misconception of a complete automated system is you don't have anyone there. It's like a self-driving car. You still need somebody there to when, just making sure it is operational, but it could provide more continuity of operation and maybe reduce some of the, the risks to workers and, but...
Most definitely. It's...
So, you know, I don't know if, if that's something that you feel we should look at. Right now, it's a study and a master plan. I think in a master plan, you, you've got to look
It's, it's a time to look at it.
For the moon. And then sometimes you can only build to the woodshed.
That's exactly right. So, that's, I think that's a good point to bring up because, you know, we can always put the, estimate the costs and, and show you kind of what it's going to look like at the master plan. And maybe that's not something that needs to be done right away. So, maybe that's something, you know, we say, after you've done all these other improvements, that's something that you can do. Because that's part of the master plan, too, is sequencing these improvements so that you're covering the most critical things first and also trying to minimize cost to ratepayers over time. So, you're not, you know, paying a bunch more money to handle emergency situations. But then you're just, you know, better utilizing the money that you bring in from the ratepayers.
And without looking at it, we don't know how much it'll cost. We don't know whether it'll be feasible. Just, you know, what we found since phase one started, we looked at the basins and we thought everything was going to be fine. But then further investigation showed we have other issues that we really need to look at, at serious improvements to guarantee that we have adequate water supply. And I think, you know, I would be interested in looking just to see if automated controls would be practical, if it would be feasible on our plant. And then is the cost going to be justified? You know, it's like, once we know how much, then it's like, would I rather take that much money and put in water line replacement if I'm not going to get a, a big improvement on providing water to the public? Because we still have to distribute no matter what we treat. So, I don't want to overload it, but we do need to know how much that would cost, in, in my opinion. So, commissioners, are you interested in getting a price to expanding the master plan to include automated controls or automated operations at the water treatment plant?
This is Commissioner Hayes, and I am interested in knowing those costs.
Okay.
Yes, I'm also interested. I think, did they not shoot a cost of, to add that on at a cost of $5,000? Or, and I'm thinking of something else that I'd read into that.
Was that a, Nicole, we did get an email that did say 5,000, but I wasn't for sure if that was firm or approximate.
Yeah, I was looking at Sarah's email. She thought it was...
I think the speakers have COVID. Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Oh, sorry. You, you were saying that Sarah?
Yeah. Yeah. She, she had a kind of guess estimate at this point about $5,000. I think that's completely reasonable. It wouldn't be, I don't think it would be much more than that, based on how much our electrical guys would need to, control guys would need to look into it. So, that's, it'd probably be up to $5,000 addition.
Okay. Thank you.
So, are you, are you saying that we could add $5,000 to the proposal we had? Or do you want to verify and get back with us on that amount?
Um, is that the only issue that you guys have?
Right.
So, we could, I don't know. I feel like we could probably move forward with that.
So, basically, you're saying that it'd be a cost estimate not to exceed $5,000? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. In addition to the fee that we had in the
Right.
Contract we talked over.
Okay.
So, it'd be a, that would change from the 34,000 to 39,000 not to exceed?
Yeah.
Kelly, how do you feel?
I mean, I think it's good to look at it.
Okay.
You don't know what you don't know. That's what they're always told us.
Terry, are you in agreement with that?
I agree. Now's the time to look at it and see, while we're in there doing work, see what we can accomplish and what the benefit would be.
Okay, fine. No further questions, Commissioner Hayes?
I'm good.
Commissioner Yussisi?
I'm good.
Okay, then. I'll call for a motion.
I make a motion. I move to authorize the mayor to sign supplemental agreement with PEC for water supply and treatment master plan. Do I need to include not to exceed $39,000 in cost? Okay, I'm including that.
And the motion should probably state that that's to include review of an automated system?
All right. Let me read that again, then. I move to authorize the mayor to sign a supplemental agreement with PEC for water supply and treatment master plan, not to exceed $39,000 in cost. And that includes considering automated system at the water plant.
Okay. I'll second the motion. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Commissioner Hayes says aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Nicole and Ryan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item C, consider adopting an ordinance relating to appealing decisions of the building inspector.
When this was redone and cleaned up, the language was left in there about it going to the Board of Zoning Appeals, which is not over the building inspector. So, Jeff brought this to my attention. And two options that he prepared was that the appeals could go either to the city commission, which if they're not satisfied, it would go to district court, or they can go to district court. If the Board of Zoning Appeals makes a decision, it's appealable to district court, not to the city commission. So, we wanted to provide you with both options. And Jeff, I don't know if you have anything on that since you prepared it.
There is a state statute that requires cities to have Board of Zoning Appeals. And in that statute, statute, it tells, or it states that if a person is dissatisfied with the decision of the Board of Zoning Appeals, that appeal goes to district court. That's state law. And so, that's where our zoning code was set up. Our zoning code, and I don't know how it got this way, some of the building code, or some of the building inspection language was in the regular code and some was in the zoning code. They were co-mingled. So, what we've done eventually here is we've separated them out. So, the zoning code, everything goes to the Board of Zoning Appeals. You have a zoning administrator. Then your building inspector is actually, it can be the same person, but separate duties. And then we, we don't want that appeal going to the Board of Zoning Appeals. But you have a choice. You can, because that is not covered by state statute. There's a default state statute that says any final decision at the city level can be appealed to district court. Afraid it's going to blow up on them. So, you can, you can create in an ordinance, you know, you can have it go to, to city commission first and then to district court, or just straight to district court.
Yeah. When I was looking at it, it seemed like if it went to the city commission, it could maybe avoid some legal expenses first. And then as last result, if they're still wanting to, to push it, they could take it to the district court. That that would bring the, the building inspector, of course, is going to be working with the city manager and assistant city manager. Then when it comes to the commission and explained, you know, it would have to be an unusual circumstance that I think the commission would not back up the city manager in a decision. It would have to be, you know, a major fallacy of either code interpretation or interpretation of the contract drawings or neglect there for the commission not to support that action. And then everybody could be in, in city on the same page in unison. Then if the, the individual wanted to appeal that, then they could take it to district court. But it would bring that unity by bringing it the step to the commission.
Yeah. Being that the building inspector is part of the, the city, and we also are part of the city being commissioners, I think it's only right that, that, that would come to the city commission to consider. And it would have to be something that would be extremely out of the ordinary and something that would, that would cause us to reconsider a ruling. And...
And obviously in many years, we've not had any appeals because this has been on the books and we haven't had any filed. So I doubt you're going to have very many, but we need to have the process established.
Sure, understand. And I like, I like the, the part to where if by chance the, the person that's bringing this up is not happy with what the city commission decides on this, they do have another alternative to go to district court on their own if they decide to. But it gives them a step, uh, in between that to where maybe we can settle or talk this out and they can, they can have a better understanding of why, why it is interpreted the way it is, so.
Commissioner Hayes?
Thank you. Well, I am a, a fan of being consistent within our own policies. So, uh, I, I do see value within, you know, if there is a zoning process that we might at least consider setting up the appeals process for, um, for building inspection in the same order and sequence and a number of steps, et cetera. But, uh, I don't, uh, I don't have a particular preference, uh, in this particular regard with, uh, with regard to building inspection coming to, appeals coming to the city commission now. I, I don't, I don't have a preference.
The, the appeal going to the planning and zoning board is kind of out in nature that if for a building inspector's decision, the planning and zoning is considered, their, their task is land use and the building inspect, the
Pardon me. Uh, pardon me. Yes, I understand that, Leonard. I, my point was that processes that we establish for appeals of any nature go through, uh, the same sequential number of steps. Uh, not necessarily that everything go through the planning and zoning board of appeals, but that we would establish at least an opportunity within the city to have an appeal heard before going to court. That in this case would be the city commission as the first step for the appeal as opposed to, uh, a separate building inspection board of appeals that we would establish.
Right, yeah. I was just commenting about the way our ordinance read currently, that it said to go to
I see.
planning and zoning, that the two are not related and it offers confusion to take that through. And, and I agree with, with you to, to try and handle a separate board of appeal for a building inspector decision. The, the process, I think, should go from building inspector to his supervisor, then to the city manager, then to the, the commission and that final phase to the court. That it, it gives a lot of checks and balances in-house to correct something. And then also bringing in, uh, solidarity between the, the leadership of the city before it goes to court. It just seems jumping right into court on a building inspector decision would be a little more aggressive than, than necessary. But, yeah, I agree that, uh, with your, your comment. So, uh, what I'm, I'm taking that when we look at, at action on this motion that, um, it would go to the commission and not district court? Is that, Kelly?
Yes.
Okay. So there's no further questions? Commissioner, you, Susie?
I'm good, thank you.
And Commissioner Hayes?
I'm good.
Okay, great. Then I'll call for a motion.
I make a motion. I move to authorize the mayor to sign an ordinance, amending ordinance number forty-three thirty, having to do with appeals from decisions of the building inspector, which such appeals to go to the city commission.
Okay, I'll second the motion. We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Commissioner Hayes says aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item five, reports. Item A, city board minutes. Uh, Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments about the three minutes included in the packet?
I have none.
Commissioner Hayes does not.
Okay, then item B, the holiday parade on Sunday, November twenty-second, two thousand twenty at 5:30 PM? Do we just, just want to
It's just a report to let you know about that. That this actually is approved by staff, but I just wanted you aware of it.
Can you believe we're that close to Christmas already? Man, where did the year go?
This is before Thanksgiving.
Yeah. Not that I want to go back through two thousand twenty, I think.
No.
Okay, next item on the agenda, that is, uh, city manager comments.
I'm going to have David give you an update on two things. The first is our COVID situation and the second is, uh, the, the CESR program that he's working on.
Mayor, as you're aware, uh, we've had several COVID incidents in the city this week. Uh, initially in our police department and now we have in the fire EMS. Uh, we have several COVID positive people and we have some sick individuals now tonight in the fire EMS. Uh, we are doing all of our efforts to ensure the safety of the public and ensure everybody is safe on our EMS units. Uh, we have tested all staff, all staff. Uh, we ensure that are, they are not COVID positive or having any signs and symptoms. And we are wearing all PPE, uh, while on calls. And that staff, those shifts will be tested prior to coming on duty to ensure that nobody is COVID positive. Uh, at this time, we're continuing to be able to manage it. And staff has stressed the system a little bit, but we're continuing to make it through. And we just encourage everybody, uh, tracing, we really don't know where they were exposed at. Just as you've said at multiple commission meetings, we encourage people to wear masks, social distance, and just to be careful. It is, COVID is really out there in the community right now.
So the, all the precautions that you're taking, the public is safe and there's, you're
We're, we're doing, trying to ensure one hundred percent. Uh, we're testing the employees that are on duty, uh, that are responding on our fire EMS units are not COVID positive and they're showing no signs or symptoms. But we're assuring that they wear all PPE for all patient contacts. Just trying to doubly save. Uh, we're cleaning our trucks after every call and doing everything we can to make sure our public is safe.
And the PPEs, they're N ninety-five masks?
They are all in N ninety-five masks. You know, the standard is just a cloth mask. We've stepped that up to just add additional protection by putting them in N ninety-five masks.
Okay, great, great. Yeah, that COVID is interesting, the, uh, the effects from mild flulike symptoms to respiratory distress and other organ problems. So, um, you know, I know that from day one that you and, and Kelly have done everything possible to protect not only the staff and the public. And I'm confident that that's happening now. I'm sure that if, the need that you're going to protect the public too, so that's great.
I commend Chief Harrison for his quick reaction too when it happened in his department, so.
Great.
He's done a great job there too.
Okay, good.
The other item is the CRS program. The commission approved that last year. Uh, that is with FEMA and the state. And it is to help reduce the flood insurance premiums that our citizens in the floodplain have to pay. It's, it, it's been a long process. A lot of a lot of work because, uh, they couldn't come because COVID hit. So everything was done on the telephone and, uh, back and forth that way. But I'm proud, I'm happy to report to Kelly and to you guys that we have been approved. Uh, my score was a seven, which gives the community a fifteen percent discount that will be starting this next year. Uh, the, the program starts in January. The discount, the way FEMA works, it starts in October of two thousand twenty-one, but I have to start the program in January two thousand twenty-one. There are continued ways that we can continue to improve the program, uh, with different, more projects that we can do to hopefully increase that. She felt fairly confident over the next couple of years, we could take that fifteen percent and go up higher. You know, maybe twenty-five, thirty percent, so. But we're starting with a fifteen percent. So, uh, it'd be a lot of stuffs happening in January, a lot of information going out. And we're going to be working to help keep the floodplain monitored and in compliance, so.
Great, and so far this has mainly just been paperwork and documentation. The cost to the city has been
Yeah, we, you guys done a few code change, a lot of paperwork. In January, what you'll see is a lot of stuff out on social media. Uh, letters will be going to people in the floodplain, telling them about, uh, the floodplain, what insurance is available, what they can and can't do in the floodplain. And a lot of, you'll see a lot more information and a lot more work going out.
Okay, great, great. Thank you.
I just wanted to give you a, a few staff updates. Um, Joe Manio's been promoted to the street supervisor trainee position effective immediately. And he's worked for the city for over six years, so we want to congratulate Joe. Um, David had some very good applicants for the building inspector position. Uh, we have hired a building inspector trainee, Tyler Henry, and he will start on November twenty-third. So we want to welcome him aboard. Um, Mike DeVore is transferring from the street department to Memorial Hall effective November fifteenth. He'll train with Barry and replace Barry's position as a maintenance three. And Mike will also be cross-training with Rick Barnes and to learn the advanced building maintenance at building D and other city facilities as needed. And Mike's worked for the city for nearly sixteen years, so we want to thank him for agreeing to fill this much-needed position. Um, Angela Anthony is, is, I'm sure you've read, has been hired as the new park and zoo director. She will begin training with Barb on November sixteenth. And Katie Southworth has been appointed assistant park and zoo director effective immediately. And Katie has worked for the city for nearly twelve years. And we want to welcome, uh, Angela aboard and congratulate Katie. And, um, Damon Athie was promoted to police sergeant on October twenty-sixth. And Damon's worked for the city for over four years and we want to congratulate him. And then Lana Robinson, I know she's been there a little while, but I had never mentioned it, uh, was hired last July as the deputy city clerk to replace Brenda Weaver, who retired after more than twenty-nine years of service. And we all miss Brenda and of course wish her, wish her well on her well-deserved retirement and congratulate Lana and Brenda. And then Barb and Barry will officially, officially retire January first, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, their last work day will be December eighteenth. Barb has worked for the city for over thirty-nine years in the clerk's office and also at the park and zoo, while Barry has worked for the city for over thirty-one years in fire and EMS department in Memorial Hall. We're working on a safe way to celebrate their retirement. Some will update you once that's been determined and we want to congratulate Barb and Barry. So I just wanted to give you that update. We're also working on the, um, engagement survey, um, analyzing that to get that information out to the employees and visit with the commission about that. And then I just want to thank all the voters for the sales tax. Um, it's, it was, you know, that's equivalent to forty mils of revenue annually. And that was, uh, a huge, uh, support from, from, from the citizens uh, that definitely will make it much easier on budgeting some of these big projects that we have, uh, in front of us. That's it.
Great, well, thank you, Kelly. Appreciate all your hard work too.
Oh, well, thank you.
I know you
I've got a lot of help.
You, uh, were running when you took over as city manager and you haven't stopped. We appreciate all that, your
Thank you.
diligence and your hard work. Okay, on, uh, the next item is Commissioner comments. Commissioner Hayes, do you have any comments tonight?
I have not.
Commissioner, you, Susie?
Yeah, I just want to make a small comment here and we've, we've talked about it at past meetings. Uh, Leonard, the mayor has talked about this also. Uh, with COVID still, um, showing, uh, no signs of relating, uh, even though it's not mandatory, I'm really asking for people to, um, to, in this case, do the right thing, uh, for not only your family, uh, but the people that you come in contact with. You know, this will help, um, slow down the spread of COVID nineteen. And it's a, it's a small act and a request for you as an individual to do. You're not required to do, but this is something that, um, I hope you, you think that it is, uh, in this case, it is the right thing to do. It's, I, I wear one every time I go into places. It is not that big of a deal to wear one. Uh, I'll go back to my vehicle and get one if I'm, realize I don't have one with me. But it's such a small act of kindness to do, uh, to help protect not only yourself and your family, your family members, but people that you come in contact with every day. So, um, I'm really encouraging you to rethink, um, what you, how you feel about this. And I'm asking you to step up and do this, uh, for the benefit, not only for you and your family, but for the community at whole, as a whole. So I hope you take this to heart. Thank you.
Thank you. And along that line, I don't know if you caught what, uh, David said that the cases that have come to the city to identify where the contact was made that the infection began, they don't know. That's the thing that with, with COVID, you've got to always be ready. That, you know, wash your hands, mask up and, uh, watch the gatherings. That, you know, that's the, the case, we're not out of the, the woods yet. And the more we gather together for different events, uh, greater the chance of contracting COVID. And, um, you know, it is, some people are lucky. I've talked to those that have had it, uh, as flulike symptoms and, and that's it. But then others, uh, within a week, they've developed problems with heart, lungs, and some have even passed away because of the COVID. So we got to work together to, to curb it. We're not New York, we're not Kansas City, we're not Wichita, we're independents. So we have to deal with it the way our town is situated. We still have to protect ourselves and to protect each other, so. Our next item is public concerns. David, we had no requests for that. The next item on the agenda then is adjournment. So with that, I would make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
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 Commissioner Hayes says aye.
Uh, meeting adjourned. Thank you for calling in, Commissioner Hayes.
Thank you for allowing this.